The Archdiocese of Chicago is a vibrant and diverse faith community. We celebrate our faith through worship, evangelization, and reaching out to the needy. Welcome to Catholic Chicago.
Good morning, welcome to Catholic Chicago on WNDZ 750 AM and also get us on youtube.com/CatholicChicago, youtube.com/CatholicChicago. On this Monday, June 10th, the program was taped last Thursday. So I'm Father Greg Sakowitz, director of Holyoke Cathedral, and co-host Mark Terese, who is very involved cheering with a couple of other wonderful people, Claire and John. Our 175th and 150th anniversary is coming up at the cathedral. Good morning, Mark, how are you?
Very good, and one exciting thing with the 175th, we had a donor who recreated the Mother Cabrini statue that's in our courtyard, and we're presenting it at St. Paul outside the walls in Rome as the launch for our 175th in Rome, and it's a gift to the Pope in honor of his work with immigrants.
In mid-November.
Mid-November.
The thing that amazes me though is, I can't believe we're now approaching one-third through June.
I know. It just happened.
It feels like it was just Easter Sunday on March 31st, and we are approaching now mid-June. And I hate to say this, we're gonna blink, it'll be July 4th, Labor Day, and then football.
Hope better than baseball.
Well, the Cubs will be fine, the White Sox are just dismal, just pack it up for the year, but I think the Cubs will be fine. They're contenders, not pretenders. We have a great program lined up here this morning. Saint Josephine Bequita Parish located 2132 East 72nd Street is hosting the Third Annual South Shore Summer Safety Town Hall Meeting on Saturday, June 15th from noon until 2:00 PM with a focus on honoring fathers, building trusting relationships, and safer communities. This event is free and open to the public with refreshments served afterwards. Joining us to talk about the Third Annual South Shore Summer Safety Town Hall Meeting are Sandra Botello and Dwight Hearns. Sandra and Dwight, good morning to the program, how are you?
Good morning.
Very good, good morning, thank you for having us.
I know, this is the third annual, you've been on the program before. Now Dwight, briefly, were you born and raised in Chicago?
Yes.
Where at?
I was not.
Where are you from Dwight, in Chicago?
South Shore actually, well, my parents were in Woodline when I was born, and we moved over to South Shore in 1970, have been here ever since.
And what high school did you go to?
Went to De La Salle.
De La Salle?
Oh wow.
Out of curiosity, what-
A meteor.
Yeah, a meteor, what class were you?
Seventy-five.
And I was Notre Dame College prepping Niles, seventy-one, so you're much younger. Where are you from Sandra?
I'm originally from Idaho, but when I was about six months old, we moved to Chicago, and then at eight, I moved back to Idaho. I've been in a couple of different states, I've lived in Mexico as well, but I've been in South Shore for the last ten years.
That is amazing, well, first of all, thank you for being a guest, I know that Larry Campbell, who kind of organized and spearheaded the program, will not join us here this morning, but Larry's always with us in spirit. So maybe tell us for a moment, the Third Annual Town Hall Meeting to be held on June 15th, maybe for our listeners, what is a town hall?
So, this is the third year that we're hosting this, the way that it's come about is that we get quite a few political leaders, the police department, local organizations, and community members to come together and have discussions regarding the safety in our neighborhood. We get, as community members, we ask the police and the city leaders what plans are in place, how as community members can we report these crimes, or how can we get the services that we need for our community in order to make it safer, and also, this year we're really trying to reach out to the youth, because without them, it's, I mean, we need them in order to be able to make this a prosperous and better, safer neighborhood for everybody.
Now Dwight, before the show, we were chatting a little bit, what's the temperature in South Shore? That, you know, this event hopefully will build relationships, good relationships, or maybe continue to grow them, but what would your assessment be right now as we approach summer? What's the temperature in South Shore?
It's warming up, okay, and that's one of the reasons why we're hosting, we're hosting a town hall during this time period, is that so we can have some plans in place and not be so reactionary if things go awry during the summer months. We know that kids are out, and they are outside, they're doing things, they're active, and so the temperature is that some of the nonprofit groups want to contribute, they want to be involved, the activists want to be involved, and CPD is always there, they've been to the previous two town hall sessions, and they generally stay the duration, the two hours of the town hall meeting.
Yeah, and I think it's very interesting, you used a great phrase Dwight, and that is, the whole purpose of the Safety Town Hall is to be proactive and not reactive. There's a huge difference. Now, this is the Third Annual Safety Town Hall in that area, what came out of the first two that you will now build upon with this third hall? Sandra?
The first one was gathering all of the people that we wanted to ask questions from, and a relationship started forming. Senator Robert Peters came out, he did a fantastic job, our alderman at the time was, I forgot her name, I knew I was gonna do that.
She's not here.
But she came out, she did a great job as well, and then last year, we got more organizations to be able to speak up, and what I really found that was beautiful was that each organization is like, everybody's working independently, but once everybody got to hear what each other was doing, we started a network of like, oh, you guys do that, I have people that I need to go to get your services, or, oh, I didn't know you guys offered that, and give me some more information. So organically, these networks just started to work together a little better. This year, I feel that there are other organizations that are also stepping up and doing similar work as to what we've done.
Now Dwight, I remember from last time, and you, I think you were just finishing your degree, so you're Dr. Dwight, Dr. Dwight, and business psychology, how is this event good for the business community in South Shore?
It's good for the community, the business community especially, because perhaps we can have the kids under control, okay? No business is gonna come into a community where there's chaos, where they're driving cars up into the front door and going in and ripping off away the cash station machines and things of that nature. For that reason and others, businesses have left the community, you know, and so we have to get this under control. Now, where they're not going into stores, ramming cars into stores, there's a lot of theft going on, okay? No one wants to really talk up or admit that, okay? I think I just heard an article on TV that Walmart is equipping employees with body cameras so they can actually record someone if they see them stealing something. The employees won't approach them, but they can give that video to the police authorities and then try to apprehend those individuals at that point. But the idea is that no one's gonna come into the community unless crime is under control. We can't have a chance to build unless that's all being dealt with.
Out of curiosity Dwight, how many attended the first year and second year, the Safety Town Hall?
I think the first year was maybe about a hundred people, the second year slightly less, but we were not at our Bequita, Saint Josephine Bequita location, we were at Our Lady of Peace, because we had a funeral that took priority over at Josephine Bequita, so, but we will be at home on this upcoming Saturday on June 15th, so we're looking for at least a hundred, 125 people.
Now can I-
Hundred and thirty.
No, can I ask, so Saint Josephine Bequita Parish Social Justice Committee is putting this on, I'm showing my ignorance, I don't know who Saint Josephine Bequita is, and could you give us a little background on her, and also, the address is on here, 2132 East 72nd Street, but would people know it by another parish name? Is this Emerged Parish?
This is Emerged Parish, we were formerly Saint Philip Neri.
Oh, okay, now I know exactly where you're going.
Yeah, so Saint Philip Neri, okay, see, I'm being a priest now forty-five years, I'm so used to the old names, with the mergings and closings and new names, I get thrown, so you say, yeah, Saint Philip Neri, oh my gosh, yeah, I know exactly where that's at.
One of the Quigley North prophets that we had years ago lived at, Father Bill Sheridan lived at Saint Philip Neri, I think for like thirty years, maybe more.
And the people loved him.
He is a lovely, lovely priest.
You know Sandra, a little bit different type of question is, in the first two years, now leading up to this third year, I mean, I'm sure you've had moments that really exhilarated you, you know, made you feel terrific about the direction, but also, from the first two years, you look at the reality of the world we live in, South Shore, Chicago, not just our city, everywhere, what still frustrates you in this whole area?
I think for me, my biggest frustration is probably finding solid assistance, like everybody knows there's a problem, and everybody has connections and phone numbers, but the solution to the actual problem is never really addressed, so that becomes very frustrating, especially for mothers. If you're having a problem with a child, unless the child wants help, they can't help you, unless the, unless certain people are involved, you're really not getting the assistance that you need, and a lot of it has to do through high schools, and one of our new people that we're inviting to the, to the event is Excel Academy High School, which is an alternative high school, and they are very, very good at addressing those kinds of issues, especially with young men and women that are beginning to have issues in regular schools, they get sent there, they have additional resources that actually help and provide real assistance.
Interesting, Dwight, same question, I know things that excite you, make you feel great, what's happened so far with the progress, but also, what frustrates you the most?
What frustrates me the most is not addressing the elephant in the room. Everybody knows there is an elephant there, but no one wants to point to it and say, there he is, meaning that people don't speak up. We have a chance to talk with our representatives, talk with our aldermen, talk with our CPD commanders, talk with our non-for-profits, our organizations, and really hammer them, ask them questions, and look at the direction, or make suggestions, okay? We have an opportunity, well, people will hold on and hold on and hold on, and then after it's over, at least this particular town hall, we're having refreshments after, but that's, and I don't know how many people or panelists that we've invited will stick around to the end to partake of those refreshments, but there will be an opportunity there to talk with them, to really get their perspective out, or to take further what was already discussed during the town hall, but people don't say anything, they just hold it and they grumble among each other, and that's not solving any problems.
Exactly, we're gonna take a little break, WNDZ 750 AM, Catholic Chicago, you can go to youtube.com/CatholicChicago, we're with Dwight Hearns, Sandra Botello, we'll be back in a few minutes. When we come back, I'd like to ask both of you, as you plan this event, it's honoring fathers too, you're inviting fathers, as a father, when I come as a father and I have a young son who's, wants to be good, wants to be involved, are there possibilities that they might learn at this event of how they can, my son can spend the summer in South Shore in a positive way? We'll be back in a few minutes, please stay tuned.
Catholic Charities Golf Classic is teeing up to be a fabulous event this summer. Join us on Monday, July 15th, at Knollwood Club in Lake Forest and Shore Acres in Lake Bluff, two premier courses in Chicago. Proceeds from this outing will support Catholic Charities programs and services in Cook and Lake Counties. Last year, we served more than 400,000 people, improving lives and nourishing spirits through their difficult times. Gather your foursome, or just join us for the spectacular dinner following the tournament. Catholic Charities Golf Classic is always a highlight of summer in Chicago. Come and experience this signature event for yourself. To learn more and register for the Catholic Charities Golf Classic on July 15th, call 312-948-6864, that's 312-948-6864, or visit catholiccharities.net.
This is your forty-four for me teaching, when I started here, there were teachers here that had taught me when I was a student, now I'm the old person. Right now, I teach junior high math. I love when kids find what I'm teaching to be fun, and they get it, I see that lightbulb go off, and it's a thrill. People are always amazed, what, what, you're here for forty-four years? It's hard for me to believe frankly. I love what I do, every summer I think, oh, I miss the classroom, even on the weekends, I think I can't wait to get back on Monday and teach those quadratic equations.
Shape the next generation of leaders, teach, apply today at archchicago.org/schooljobs. Did you know that Catholic Charities accepts car donations? If you're ready to free up space in your garage and put a stop to all those expenses that go along with owning a car, we will gratefully accept your donation, whether the car is running or not. You choose a pickup time that is convenient for you, and we will make the donation as easy as possible, free of charge. You'll receive a charitable donation receipt as well. We accept all types of vehicles nationwide, and you will know that your donation is made to Catholic Charities, an agency you can trust. To learn more about donating your car, call 877-786-4483, that's 877-786-4483. Thank you.
We're back, WNDZ 750 AM, Catholic Chicago, go to youtube.com/CatholicChicago. We're speaking with Sandra Botello and Dwight Hearns about the Third Annual South Shore Summer Safety Town Hall Meeting, which is gonna be Saturday, June 15th, noon to 2:00 PM, free, it's open to the public, it's at Saint Josephine Bequita Parish, it's 2132 East 72nd Street.
Formerly known as Saint Philip Neri.
Right, so it's really a landmark in that South Shore area. And when we took a break, the question I had was, because I wanna make sure people understand, there are a lot of wonderful young people in South Shore, how are they gonna spend their summers? Is this event at all gonna network them, or network a father, who you're honoring fathers, giving fathers some resources for their kids who they want to be positive this summer? Are their programs gonna be talked about, or directing people to things?
And not to live in fear.
That's a big one, yeah, not to live in fear, but to live in a positive way. Dwight, do you wanna start, and then maybe Sandra?
Well, my specific area is more along the lines of what, what we can do to keep our kids safe, and that would be in regards to activities within the community, so they just won't be roaming the streets and looking for something, and make the wrong decision, and cause chaos and confusion. An idle mind, as we say, is the devil's workshop. So, the idea in my, from my angle, is trying to keep the kids busy and have them with a direction, a course throughout the summer, to be engaged in something.
Good, Sandra, what about you?
So, in South Shore, we do have a lot of single parent families, and a lot of the fathers are absent, but the ones that are present is the ones that we're going to be honoring. We absolutely need the participation of fathers in many areas. We have a couple of organizations that do step up in that role, like Operation Neighborhood Safety, they used to be basketball, NBA basketball players, they put in a program where in some gas stations, they'll station themselves outside, and if they see a woman that's about to go in and get gas, they'll pump the gas for her in order to keep her safe. They also provide a lot of basketball tournaments and games for kids. Lawrence Hall, Lost Boys, and the Clarition Associates also step into those roles to be able to provide a specific program for you, for the young adults, and when they, last year, one of the things that we saw is that they kind of recognized each other, they weren't, they knew they existed, but they were able to have a platform where they could actually talk, communicate, and also network.
Beautiful.
You know, Sandra, I listened to you and Dwight, what fascinates me is your enthusiasm, your dedication, your commitment, there's so many things you'd be doing with your life, you're very intelligent, bright, and how did you get into this area to really come forward to try to make a difference in your community, in the area of justice, safety, and peace? I'm just interested, what triggered this response with this enthusiasm, and, or basically, you could be spending your time doing a lot of other things, but you're doing this, why?
Thank you so much, Father. One of the things is wanting better. You see, as I, as I mentioned earlier, my family has been here since 1970. Now, I've moved to other places and lived other places around between 1970 and now, going away to school and things like that, but it's not the same as it was, and so, when it was young, when we were here, they were, it was a different atmosphere, it was a different spirit, it was great, it's not that any longer. So the idea is a rekindle, a restorative plan, process to as it was, because it can be better. I have seen incidents around the community that are grueling, are gruesome, even a member of our church was attacked on the steps of the church, right before the eight o'clock mass. Okay, and so, we now have security out in front of the church for the eight o'clock mass and the ten o'clock mass on Sundays, and so never at any other time in history has any church I've attended or have been, has security outside of the church. These are different times we live in, and different tactics must be used, so we approached the issue from two sides, one, the spiritual, the activist side, the proactive side, and the other, you know, trying to keep kids busy, doing something to alleviate some of these issues that occur within the community.
Maybe, maybe the very same question for you Sandra is, again, like Dwight, so many other things you'd be doing, but you're putting a lot of energy and focus here, why?
For me, I love South Shore, I have a dog that I need to walk every day, and I love just the beauty of it, we have Jackson Park, we have the lakefront, I like going to Saint Philip Neri because of the walk there, it's just a beautiful place, I, I don't feel as threatened as a lot of people think I should be. I have neighbors, and most of the neighbors that I live around, we all watch out for each other, we take care of each other's packages, and I think it's kind of the atmosphere that you build around yourself can just expand, and if I can do that with my neighbors like next door, or a couple buildings down, or down the street, it's like, I think we should be able to have that in the whole community. I don't think it's as, as dire as it seems on the news, I mean, I've been here ten years, I've had a couple of incidents, but I mean, incidents are gonna happen anywhere.
Exactly.
For me, I have a lot of faith, and I believe God wants us to do good things and be there for each other, and if we have that in our soul, that we want to build better communities, and then we trust the people that we're building those communities with, it's gonna happen.
Beautiful, so Third Annual South Shore Summer Safety Town Hall Meeting, Saturday, June 15th, 2024, noon to 2:00 PM, free, it's open to the public. I'm a father in South Shore, why should I come?
Because you want to learn more.
And what, and what am I gonna learn?
You want, you wanna learn more, and you wanna become engaged, okay? If you want change, if you'd like to see change, then be engaged.
What's your, I'm sorry. Interesting for both Sandra and for Dwight, is sometimes we take on what's called a victim mentality, that there's nothing I can do, I feel so helpless, I don't have a voice, so what you're really saying is a Safety Town Hall Meeting this, on Saturday, June 15th, I think for me does a couple of things, as I listen to you, one, it brings people together with a common cause of belief in God, and belief in justice, and safety, and the thing is, not to be able to live in fear, but to try to put structures into place, and not just talk about it, but Dwight, you said earlier, that a lot of people at the meeting say nothing during the coffee break or the meeting's over, are talking up, and you're saying to people walking in, when the meeting begins, that's the time to speak up in a very respective way, doesn't have to be shouting, nothing gets accomplished with shouting and yelling, but I think somehow, just have the numbers there together saying, we can stand and make a difference to end violence.
What's your goal for the day Dwight and Sandra?
I feel like our Catholic faith teaches us that, in Spanish, I say, la unión hace la fuerza, so being in unity, you have more power, more force, and the more good people are together, unifying against the bad, the faster we're gonna be able to eradicate it. We have to be able to pinpoint it, address it, fix it, and move on, because the more we're kicking down the can, it's just not ever going to stop, and getting together, getting the good forces together, good things are gonna happen.
Dwight, a closing thought?
We are hopeful that we can get our message across in this town hall as we have the previous two, but go further with that message and have a little more action as well, from our residents, as well as our aldermen and nonprofit leaders within the community.
Now Dwight, is there a phone number or website people can go to to learn more about this?
The church website, mm, the church website, Sandra, do you have it?
If you don't, that's okay.
We just have a Facebook page, so you can go on Facebook and then put in Saint Josephine Bequita Parish, you'll be able to find that, and then our phone number, I don't have it off the top of my head.
That's okay.
We do have a couple of the flyers that have the phone number on them, I just don't have it on me.
Okay, I think you do provide a lot of stuff, I wanna thank in a very special way Sandra Botello and Dwight Hearns for joining us, a big- way Sandra Botello and Dwight Hearns for joining us. A big safety hall meeting on Saturday, June 15th. Special thanks also to Mark Terese, co-host, great work of our producer engineers, Michael May, Clint Cottrell. To our listeners, may God bless all of you. Have a wonderful week. Be safe and help one another. God bless.